Okay, welcome everyone. Good morning and thank you for joining us. My name is Max Wolf and I'm the Public Policy Manager at the Charles River Chamber. We're happy to bring you a conversation with the three candidates running for one seat on the Wellesley Select Board. Today you will hear from Michael Tower, Kenny Largus and Odessa Sanchez. All three candidates will be on the ballot for the March fourth annual townwide election. As for the parameters, this will be a one hour debate. There will be no opening statement, but each candidate will have ninety seconds to complete a closing statement. Other than the closing statement, we will not be using a timer. But I do ask that each candidate be respectful of each other's time, keep their answers concise and focus on the questions asked. I also reserve the right to interrupt and probably will do for the interest of time. Finally, I did let the candidates know about one question, the last question of today's debate, which will be, if you could time travel to any one day in world history, just to observe, but not to change anything, which day would you choose? So let's get into it. No candidate here is running for reelection, so many people watching might not know too much about you guys. I want to start with how and why you got into public service. Kenny, we will start with you. You worked on the Towns Advisory Committee. Prior to that, what inspired you to be interested in public service?
Sure, thanks Max and thanks for hosting this forum. So I grew up in a family that truly valued public service. My father was a vice principal at Shrewsbury High School for over thirty years. My mother is a public school teacher in Worcester for about the same amount of time. And my aunt happened to be on the select board in town and also eventually served in the finance committee. And I remember the first time she ran for select board, I was probably ten years old. And I loved the excitement that a campaign brought. I loved hearing about issues and strategy and and then, you know, watching how they could impact so many people's lives through public service has always stuck with me. I mean, there's still kids that come up to my father today who had him in school and tell him how much he changed their lives for the better. And you know, through that, it really wanted me to be involved. That's all I'm here.
Thank you. Michael, you work on the Towns Permanent Building Committee. Prior to that, what interested you in public service?
Yeah, thank you for the question. And let me first thank the Chamber for hosting this forum and to Kenny and Odessa for being here. I think contested elections are really healthy for the town. And so I'm glad this is a contested race and I'm glad we have these opportunities to get to know the voters. I've been a private practice attorney for over twenty years and I've served on nonprofit boards for over ten. I didn't get involved in public service on a governmental level until my family and I moved to Wellesley. And candidly, what drove me to do it is we we fell in love with this town. My wife and I both have the opportunity to live in a variety of different places, both together and separately. And including other towns like Wellesley that are well resourced. And we've never found any place quite as magical as Wellesley is with its trails and its parks and its schools and the commercial districts, the walkability. We just, we just love it. And we've always tried to model for our kids that we all have an obligation to make the world a better place. And so we had been living here, I think, less than a year, maybe around a year when my wife saw an ad in The Townsmen that something called the Permanent Building Committee was looking for a new member. I didn't exactly know what that was, but it was supposed to be a lawyer and I am in fact a lawyer. And so I reached out to Mark Kaplan, our moderator, and he was gracious enough to appoint me to the position. And I really just fell in love with it. I really, I'm a bit of a geek, so I enjoy meetings and bylaws and process. I've really come to really appreciate the folks that work in town government, both the paid staff and the over two hundred volunteers even separate from town meeting that that operate the town. So it was a real passion to do what I can to help Wellesley continue to thrive. It's something I very much enjoyed and I hope for the opportunity to be able to continue to serve the town on the select.
Thank you. Odessa, you are the Chair of the Housing Authority. Prior to that, what interested you in public service?
Well, um, thank you, Max. And again, I'm really excited about being here with the Chamber. It represents our neighboring towns like Neenam and Newton and Watertown. And I often see my Newton friends in Wellesley shopping or going to the gym. Because I grew up in Newton, Massachusetts. And as a young girl, I remembered Mayor Mann. He really came to our public schools to get all of the students involved in any community outing he was going to. He loved to show us on camera and shake our hand and explain to us some of the issues that he was working with. I was very impressed with a lot of the other politicians that would come in town and and wanna show what the school system can do across the Massachusetts. So I did get kind of starstruck with candidates that were running for office. But other than the candidates that were running for office, my own mother was a tenants organization president for her housing development. And she would often have meetings in our living room. And so I would see the tenants association meet together, look over ideas that could help residents' lives be better. And it inspired me to run a youth tenants organization. I started it myself and I wanted to make sure that the voices of the children that lived in the housing development was also was also seen. And so I thought that getting involved was something that was part of your responsibility wherever you live. And no matter what background that you come from. So it's kept me thriving today. I've lived in Wellesley now for sixteen years. I've raised my family here. My children have gone to school here. They've worked here. They play here. So we've really gotten an idea to see what's going on in the whole community. And when you cross schools and then you're in the working environment and then also you're using recreational resources, you really get a multi-tiered view of a town. So I think that I've seen Wellesley on so many different levels. And so it's inspired me to not only enjoy what this town has to offer, but also to help to make a difference. So sitting on the Wellesley Housing Authority, definitely passionate for me because I'm also a resident of Wellesley Housing. But outside of that, I'm on the Wellesley Historical Commission where we look over many ideas that are going around for plaque considerations and people trying to have buildings wavered and have demolitions delayed or to get approved. And so you get a really good sense of like what's happening, real estate wise in our town. And then also my work with the town meeting. I mean, I think that it inspired me to run in twenty twenty to be a town meeting member because I was a citizen speaker. And I think there's one thing you notice is that when you go up to speak to the mic, they say town meeting members first. So I think I don't know anybody who would live in town and who is involved, who wouldn't want to at least try to be a town meeting member. It's one of our greatest forms of small town government to have two hundred and fifty so people look over some of the important articles and warrants that affect the lives of the town. So I've been a town meeting member for three years now and I think it's, it's just the way that you want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Odessa. And so unlike some communities, Wellesley has a long tradition of maintaining the same tax rate for residents and commercial properties. Would you pledge to maintain this level tax rate for residential and non-residential properties? And additionally, what other ideas do you have to help Wellesley businesses? Let's start with Michael.
Thank you for the question. I believe it's primarily the Board of Assessors' role to set the tax rate, but separate from that, I would not make a pledge like that. I think that that the most important work that a municipal government can do is build consensus among residents. I think we have a lot of challenging questions that we're going to need to answer on behalf of our community. We have some exciting puzzles to try to solve together. And I think in order to do that, we need to maintain maximum flexibility and the ability to be nimble. And I think prejudging issues about tax rates and other things can interfere with that. I think it weakens negotiating positions. And I think it can preclude forming that consensus. All of that said, obviously, the tax burden on both residents and commercial interests is something that needs to be very closely monitored. I am a small business owner myself. In before we moved here, we lived in Memphis and I opened several restaurants and bars with a group of partners. For those involved in that industry, you know that the margins are extremely tight in the restaurant industry. And the overwhelming majority of restaurants fail within a few years because of how tight the margins are. Based on that experience, what I know for sure is that any drag on profitability can be the death knell of a business and particularly a small business. And we have a lot of vibrant thriving small businesses in Wellesley that are very much a fabric of our community. So in order to help the business community, I think that we really need to focus on very, very practical concerns. And the best way to do that is to go talk to the business owners and find out from them, what's getting in your way? What's interfering with your ability to run a business? Now, that doesn't mean that if there are regulations that are leading to increased costs, that those regulations are summarily voided. It's important that the town maintain appropriate levels of safety and beauty and comfort within our community. But what I found as a small business owner and what I suspect we will find here is that there are relatively small changes that can be made that don't necessarily impact things like town safety, but can have costs that that impacts small businesses in ways that may not be apparent to those who are not working inside them. So again, from the restaurant perspective, thinking about things like grease traps, thinking about things like hoods, thinking about how we're requiring businesses to comply with different restrictions and always wanting to make sure that we're thinking about, are there ways that we can achieve our objectives at a lower cost to those businesses? Max, was that an indication I do wrap it up?
Yeah, sorry. I might raise my hand, but uh, thank you.
I will do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to say that the Select Board does vote on a tax shift for the level tax rate and which way that burden is shared with the residents versus the commercial property owners. So the same question for Odessa now. Would you pledge to maintain this level tax rate? And what are their ideas? Would you have to help Wellesley businesses?
Okay. So when I was considering this before, I know this has come up in the business community as conversation. And I definitely sympathize with the business communities. I'm listening to them and what I hear is that they're saying that it's, it's, it's difficult for them to maintain when they are having a business in a community like Wellesley. We pledge that we want to have more diverse businesses. We want to have a commercial area that is accessible to more and we want to invite more culturally diverse and variable businesses here. If you really want to do that, then I think we do need to make sure that we lessen the chokehold on the taxes that that some of these businesses have to end up being responsible for. We want to make it more attractive and more sustainable for these businesses to not only want to come here, but to thrive once they do get here. We know rent is very expensive. And so there's a reason why, you know, the only type of businesses that seem to be a no-brainer or 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 fault safe is banks. The the financial businesses come here in town and they don't seem to have the type of problems, but we want more coffee shops and more lounges than we want ATM machines and banks. So I do think that when you, you have to look at what the town is and and what the value of the town is and what the with the real estate markup would be. But you have to also understand that there's gotta be some kind of relief for businesses, especially small businesses, so they can not be restricted to the same tax constraints that a residential, a residential home obviously has different type of criteria that they're assessing. And I think they're asking for to be considered separately and I think we should listen to that.
Thank you. Kenny, same question for you. Would you pledge to maintain the level tax rate and any other ideas to help Wellesley businesses?
I'll be concise. Yes, a hundred percent. I don't see any reason to split the tax rate. And in fact, when you do the math based on the proportion of residential to business, businesses in this town, it'll have no meaningful impact to to have a split rate. What would I do different? Or what would I, sorry, what was this? I want to make sure I'm answering your question.
Just any other ideas to help Wellesley businesses?
Sure. So by way of background, I work in the investment management field and part of our business is private equity. And in private equity space, we deal with companies who are trying to grow. And there are small businesses to medium-sized businesses who need capital. We provide them capital. And as part of that process, we become deeply invested with them in what makes them tick. What are, how they grow and what are the impediments to growth? And so it's really not that complicated. You need to be able to increase revenue and or decrease cost and that's going to increase profitability. So you increase revenue by giving people, you know, in towns like Wellesley more foot traffic. You have more customers coming through the businesses and that's likely to increase their revenue. On the cost side, you you maintain a stable tax rate, which I think ours is extremely fair. You decrease regulation that costs money. So part of my job is I'm a regulatory lawyer. And so I am very fluent in cost benefit analysis of regulations and how that all works. And I think we should really step back, look at our regulations and do a formal cost benefit analysis of any any new regulations that come forward and say, does the cost of implementing this outweigh the benefit? And if that's the case, we shouldn't be doing that. So you need a stable workforce. I think we have great workforce here. We have experienced professionals in a variety of fields. We have younger people in high schools and colleges. And we are right, you know, surrounded by other towns that have also a capable workforce. But at the end of the day, it's all about creating a business-friendly environment where businesses think they can grow. And maintaining that climate is what's going to attract businesses and keep businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. So next question. What is one attribute of another community that you wish Wellesley had? And let's start with Odessa.
Thank you. So I think that the most important thing about Wellesley is no one can come close to us with our landscapes and how beautiful everything looks. Where I think that we can kind of look to another town, for an example, would be accessibility to our beautiful amenities. I see public pools and and public areas that allow skating and and they allow swimming and they allow indoor recreation at lower cost. And I know that by working and listening to meetings with the Recreation Department, that is something that Wellesley is working on. They are in tune to seeing if they can offer a more accessible recreational space for all people that are in town. So like, for instance, the Natick Pool is something that I always love to see. I always love to see the fact that Framingham has a lot of gyms and and recreational spaces for youth to be able to do their sport and to meet with their friends. There's accessibility at night for a lot of different towns where you could actually work out at night. Our business work professionals and our students, sometimes they need to work before, work out before and after school. I just think that we are fortunate that there's some people in Wellesley who can afford private gym memberships or personal trainers. But I think that we should look at all of our community. That's why I feel like I speak to people that are just trying to make ends meet. And a lot of them don't have enough money for private lessons for something. And so they could use something like that, they would have recreational space that is subsidized. And I think that that's something that we could look to other towns for.
Thank you. And Kenny, what is one attribute of another community that you wish that Wellesley had?
I would like to see more mixed use in commercial areas. I think towns like Newburyport have done an incredible job of integrating some housing with their downtown area. And it is, you know, I saw that town thirty years ago and it was desolate. And now today it is vibrant and it really, really helps the businesses there, the restaurants and the shop and the shops. And I think that's a great example of of one place where we could look to and say, how did they do this? Now, they have a very their traffic situation is is more favorable than ours based on their their infrastructure. So I don't know that we could do exactly that. But looking to a place like Newburyport and their mixed-use developments in the commercial districts, I think is a great idea.
Thank you. And Michael, same question for you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think one of the big challenges Wellesley has been facing lately is the loss of a robust local source of news and journalism. And that's certainly not a knock on the Wellesley Report, but that's two people covering two towns and that's too much. Because of our decentralized form of government, it can be very difficult for residents to get a good sense of what's going on in town government. And it can be very difficult for folks to give feedback to town government, for for folks in town government to get that feedback from folks about how they feel about what's going on. There is a limited role for government in creating a news source, obviously, given the First Amendment and what I believe is the very important separation between that information that I don't necessarily think it's healthy that most of the information that residents are getting about town government is coming from town government. But we can certainly look at ways that we can create conditions where local media could flourish. We can look at opportunities to increase communication from town government to the residents and to continue to create opportunities for people in town to give feedback to the folks in town government about what's going on. Again, all in the interest of help driving consensus and finding compromises so that we can try to find solutions to our challenges that are right for Wellesley based on having as many voices involved in those conversations as possible.
Yep, Kenny, you wanna quick response?
I echo Michael's concern. I think that's a big issue. And I was just curious if anybody on this call has an example of any of the towns that have actually done that and ones we could leverage their success.
Odessa, do you wanna chime in or?
Yes, I know that Winchester has an excellent, not only local newspaper, but also their local media. Their local media keeps a page of all town doc, town government goings-ons. And so like if you have it on the save screen, it's just flashing what's going on in the town, public hearings, anything that you would might see and I got a public notice, but they flash it on the screen. And then they also have a website and they have a straight to your phone. They can send you updates on your phone. I think Winchester does a really good job at that.
Thank you. And I know many of our other Chamber communities also do a good job to that as well. Okay, so next question. The Wellesley Select Board has embraced the Arts and Culture Initiative by empowering its cultural council. Do you believe there's a connection between arts and culture and economic development or are they unrelated? Additionally, what other ideas do you have for helping Wellesley's arts community? And we're gonna start with Kenny on this one.
I'll be honest, that my sense is that arts and culture are draw people to the town. And the more people that show up in the town, the, you know, the more likely it is that you have economic development because you have foot traffic and people coming through and needing to eat and want to shop in the stores. So I do think there's some aspect to that. What I don't agree with, however, is taxpayers funding a cultural council for the town to then turn around and donate, make grants to you know, the arts and culture community. Because what that effectively does is take money out of a taxpayer's wallet, gives it to the town and the town decides who to fund when it comes to arts and culture. Whereas if you just kept that money in the taxpayer's wallet, they could make that donation and they could dictate where that money goes. And not for nothing, they would also get a tax break for that contribution. So I don't think the town should be dictating who gets grants for this type of thing. But I do think there's a play, there's a role for the arts in the town. And I think we should, we can make strategic investments ourselves. And I do think there's probably some relationship between that and the economic vitality of our businesses.
Thank you. And Michael, same question for you.
Yes, I think that that there is a a very clear connection between arts and cultures and economic vitality. For many of the reasons that Kenny said, I think that it draws our residents out and draws other people to our town. If people come to see a show or an exhibit, they're likely to pop into one of our amazing restaurants and have lunch or stroll through the downtown Wellesley area and pop into different shops. But I think it's actually more than that. I think that by encouraging people in town to engage in artistic endeavors, we are building excitement in the town. We're, we're building the skill sets within our town. I think in particular, when we focus on youth culture and youth arts, we are encouraging our young people to want to stay in town, to invest in our town, to be excited about the work they're doing, to discover their own skills and passions that they can use to better the town. And I think that there's a lot of ways that 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 happens already. I think of even things like the the ice sculptures that that we've seen around town recently. It's really fun to walk around and see kids taking pictures with them and seeing people out strolling by and checking them out and going to see what's going on. I think that creates a buzz around town. I think it creates an excitement that has a direct impact on on the town finances and on the the commercial district's ability to bring in customers. And I do think the government has a role in that. I think there's a long tradition of government supporting the arts in ways that the private community can't always do successfully. And because of the positive impact both on our residents and on the businesses in town, that's something that I certainly would continue to support.
Okay, so you would, you would disagree with the fact that the town can fund certain arts initiatives?
I'm sorry, I don't, I would disagree with.
You would disagree with Kenny's point that the town should not fund certain art, arts initiatives and that it should instead rely on private investment?
I am comfortable with the town supporting support. I want to make sure there was a lot of negatives in your question. So let me, let me rephrase it. I do support the town giving grants and 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 supporting arts in ways like that. Is that responsive to your question?
Yeah, thank you. And I can let Kenny respond, but I'm gonna allow Odessa to answer the question as well.
Yes. So, yes, with that, a lot of the things that Michael said, I I do agree with. When we're specifically talking about the cultural council, I think that I think it was brought up or it was originated. So more, more artists and more a diverse group of people could be recognized for the works or projects that they're doing. Or they could be, they could be funded so they can continue this work. I would say that that's just a small part. I think that it's, they're trying to make up for the fact that there, there isn't enough cultural appreciation that is allowed in the town on its own. So it seems to me like it's a little forced. I I feel like there's so many other towns that that do so many different artistic and and cultural celebrations at a grander scale and they're supported by the town. So I think it's great that they're having they honoring certain people who apply for this grant. But I would like to see a larger organization make some of these these opportunities. Because yes, pops is great. It's the, it's part of the school department though. So when kids are doing a show or a play or Wellesley Theater Project, that's just a small part. But if the town was, was making sure that there was more opportunities to see beautiful art. I mean, the last time I saw like a stroll of beautiful art, it was the, it was the magical trees that were decorated at Elm's Bank. And I just said to myself, wow, this is great. Like, you know, Framingham has this African-American exhibit that's going on for Black History Month, where you can walk in to Framingham Town Hall and see examples of African-American art. And I just think that I've heard stories from people who donated beautiful art to our town and that and it's, it's unsure where that art ended up. And so I just think that we should have a, a, a platform to be able to appreciate art. It does have something to do with economical development. It does have something to do with economical development because Michael's right, people do go out. And they have to stop off and get coffee whenever there's something going on here in town. The marathon or or any kind of grand scale event, people will stop you on the street and say, where can I get a cup of coffee? Where can we get lunch? Um we have a lot of visitors who come here to town who wanna spend um their money here and have lunch here. And so we we do wanna appreciate and keep them coming and have them have something to appreciate. And wall murals are are also um my jam too. I would love a great wall mural in downtown Wellesley.
Thank you. Okay, uh with no more um follow-ups. Let's move on to the next question. If you could add one new public service or amenity to Wellesley with unlimited funding, what would it be? And let's start with Odessa.
So I was speaking with um the reporter for Swalesley Report about this. Um she was asking me about transportation and I was telling her that um we do have a liaison from the Select Board. Um for transportation, but I think that. We should hire a um a specific person that is basically like a village planner or a transportation planner or expert. Because I do feel that um it's important enough to make sure that our town's infrastructure can support. The new people that are moving here, the students that are here and the families who wanna have the flexibility of. Um either using their um car or the train or the bus system or bikes. Um I think that somebody who is specifically doing that and not just thinking of how. It works for planning and how it works for setting up streets, that they're actually thinking about the rider. They're thinking about the walker, they're thinking about the cyclist, they're thinking about the person who has to catch the train to get into Boston before eight o'clock. Um who wants to go somewhere on a Saturday or Sunday without having an Uber. Um or catching a ride. So I do think that we should have a a transportation um staff member that's. That maybe if it's long term or short term, but just to get us around this issue that we seem to always have. And if we're going to accept the new bylaw, the laws, actually the state um mandated law for the MBTA communities. We need to respectfully have an MBTA um or a transportation expert. That is in-house, that's that's able to go and speak on behalf of what Wellesley seems to be doing about the mobility. Issues that we seem to be having.
Thank you, and I'll go to Kenny with this one next. What new public or service amenity would you add to Wellesley that if it would have unlimited funding?
Uh I would look to the seniors in the town. Uh I I think we should be. Communicating with them more, uh understanding what their needs really are. And investing in them in the same way that we invest in other parts of the town. I mean, these people tend to have been. Longtime residents have contributed significantly to the town and I think often they feel overheard and uh um overlooked. And that their needs are not uh being met. One example is with the kitchen at the Toll's Parsons Center. Uh they were promised a kitchen that worked seven years ago. And to this day, it still does not work and there's, you know, a looming fight over whether or not we're gonna fund. To give them the kitchen that we promised them that they're gonna get and that's just one example, but I think we need to be more in tune with the needs of our seniors. Um and so I would look to work with them to come up with solution, you know, understand what their needs are and figure out. How we can address them. Uh and the other thing which I'll say quickly is. I can't believe we've spent twenty thousand dollars a year in property tax on average and we don't have garbage collection.
Thank you. And Michael, same question for you.
I just wanna clarify, you're saying unlimited funding, is that right?
Unlimited funding, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. I'm gonna sound a little bit like a broken record, but I'm gonna come back to the uh communication and and. The communication issue. Um so right now, uh the Select Board and the Select Board's office are looking at ways. Of getting information about what's going on in all of our different boards and committees uh out to the residents. Um it is a, it is a a significant undertaking, particularly given our decentralized form of government. It takes um. Effort and work to gather all of that information to figure out how to put it in a format that's gonna be accessible to the town. Uh looking at ways to improve the website, looking at uh ways of leveraging new technology to create new avenues of communication. Between the town and its residents. Um all of those things cost money. And uh to my prior point, that's a service that had previously been provided by the Townsmen. Which did a pretty good job when it had a reporter whose sole beat was to cover Wellesley Town Meetings. Of synthesizing that information and giving it to the residents in bite choice chunks that landed on their doorstep. Now again, I think that there is a separate role for the fourth estate uh to be independent from government and provide. Uh impartial information, but uh the resources that uh that the town should invest. Um let me say that differently. It will, it will cost significant resources for the town to really. Come up with a communication strategy that can replace something like that, but in a hypothetical of unlimited funding. That's where I would look first because I think that's the most important or one of the most important things we need to address so that we can. Uh build consensus around answering some of the questions that we're gonna be facing over the next few years.
Thank you. And Kenny, a quick follow-up. And I'll go to Odessa next.
So again, I totally agree with what Michael's saying. Um what I think we need though is somebody on the Select Board that. That does more than just talk about this issue. We do something about this issue. This was identified in the two thousand nineteen Unified Plan. And it's probably a bigger issue today than it was then. We we need to actually do something about it and. Um I don't think we're tapping into the resources that we have. I mean, some of low hanging fruit or we could be having virtual office hours. Because people are busy and they can't always come to uh Town Hall at noon time on a Wednesday. We should be utilizing our town meeting members, giving them more information so that they can disseminate that information to their constituents. In their precincts. We should be leveraging the incredible intellectual capital that we have. At Babson and Wellesley College and other colleges around here and Wellesley High School and. Using them to come up with innovative ways to communicate. We need to understand how people consume information. And how we can deliver that information and I I and I think we need to be creative and more importantly, we need to do instead of stop talking about it.
Thank you. And Odessa, a quick follow-up, but we don't have too much time.
Yeah, I just want to state that the um in line with the question, the town is paying for. A Director of Senior Services right now and they're also paying for a Director of Communication. So those two um areas are being covered. Whether we have suggestions or not, but the town is already paying to people that are very valuable. That are supposed to be doing that job.
Thank you. Now let's switch to housing, which is one of the most important issues for our businesses. Michael, you have discussed the need to build a consensus on housing production and not rush the process. How do you balance the need to create a consensus? With the community's pressing housing needs that some people argue cannot wait?
Yeah, thank you. This this is, this is one of the really tricky questions and it's an area where people do tend to get frustrated that sometimes town government can move. More slowly than we might like. Um one of the things I've learned serving on the PBC is when you're spending taxpayer money and particularly when you're building buildings. Uh moving slowly can be a feature rather than a bug. Um and so I do agree, I I believe that. Uh we are um in a regional housing crisis. Um and I think that although Wellesley is not responsible for that crisis, we have a role like everyone else. In uh or at least is not exclusively responsible, we have a role like everybody else in trying to solve it. So in order to build that consensus, I think we need to to move forward with some of the things that are already in place. So the town is putting. Uh is going to be bringing out a new strategic housing plan. Uh that'll provide some additional information about. Uh what the town uh what the town wants, what the town needs. Um the Select Board has been doing things like civil discourse initiatives around these issues. The various boards and committees will work on this issue. All of those provide fora for communication and dialogue and I think we really need to lean into that. I think that one of the things that we saw from our last town meeting is that there is currently not a consensus right now in town. Uh around the direction uh that we wanna go uh around a housing plan that's right for Wellesley. I think that puts us at risk. I think if we are not presenting a unified front, we run the risk of having outside forces impose upon us. What they want our town to look like rather than what we want it to look like. So although I recognize that there are people right now who are feeling the housing crunch in a very significant way. Um I think that we need to recognize that sometimes planning is pro- progress and that if we move too quickly. Uh to to build buildings ourselves or to allow other people to build them in our community before we have. Uh a well-articulated plan around how we want that to look. I think that that ultimately our actions are performative and unlikely to serve us in the long term. Um I think in addition, some of the.
Thank you, sorry, we're just running low on time. Uh Kenny, you've talked about how um. We have a great workforce here, but many of our businesses tell us that the workforce is their number one issue and they're really struggling to hire. Even um you know, businesses that have pay well-paying jobs and you know, high skilled positions. They are still struggling and their workers are being pushed out to New Hampshire and beyond. Um. Do you think building more housing options can help them attract and retain their workforce?
Uh sure, if there are more housing options that were in line with incomes, uh yes, that that certainly could. Um but in my view, we need to look at housing analytically and driven by data, not by emotion. Um we should be looking at and doing a true analysis of what we need for housing. How many units of housing we need over the next ten to twenty years and working off a number. And once we have a number. We look and say, where can we put this housing based on our zoning? And we have to analyze, what's the impact on traffic? What's the impact on the schools? You know, a lot of this development is happening on the east side of town. Well, that's gonna really impact Schofield and Fisk, like that that's a major problem. Uh police fires fire, we're gonna need to build new fire stations if we put um significantly more housing. So. I think we need to stop talking about housing at a very high level and start talking about it. With specificity because only at that point can people understand what we need and how we're going to get there. Because I think when we talk about housing at a very high level, it scares people. People think this is gonna go in my backyard and I don't want that. Even people who are adamant housing advocates don't have come out and and. Opposed development in their own neighborhood because people need actual data in order to understand what the issue is. Um Michael mentioned the strategic housing plan. I I think. That is important and it should be released before the election so that we can all have a, you know, time to think about that. Uh I've heard from many people, they've seen this. Um it does not address actual needs. It talks at high level. Um and uh you know, the discussions around this plan have been anything but transparent. The fact that certain people have access to it uh and are not releasing it before town meeting or the election to me is is very problematic. I don't know why the whole town isn't part of this discussion. Um and you know, I. I'm for housing, like I said, mixed use in specific areas that can make the town more vibrant. But uh and and I do think there's probably a housing crisis in the country and in the state and in maybe in Wellesley as well, but. As a Select Board member, our job is to represent the town of Wellesley first and foremost. We need to take into account the state and the country and all that, but first we need to take into account Wellesley and and uh I think we need to be very careful with this issue.
Thank you. Odessa, our business or Wellesley has met its forty B affordability threshold and complies with the MBTA Communities Act. Does this mean the town has fulfilled its obligation to contribute to the region's housing shortage?
Well, um they've fulfilled their obligation on paper, but I feel that. Um the real obligation is uh to make sure that those um. Those buildings and those new units are actually gonna be um lived in, somebody's gonna move into them. Um I have heard of the vacancies that are at different properties that have uh that we were. Promised that they would have um you know, full capacity and I just think that the. The rush to be compliant has made certain projects go up, ribbons are cut. But um actually, some of those units are not being filled because of the logistics of it. If you have a unit. That you say is affordable, but it really isn't, or if you have a unit that is not accessible. If you need to have an elevator or if you need to have a basement. Or if you need to perhaps wanna garden or if maybe your doctor's appointments or your. Your pharmacy where you wanna get your medicine isn't close by and you just figured out that we don't really have a good traffic and mobility plan here. I think that as a Chair of the Wellesley Housing Authority, I see that, yes. Um I hear from the state that we have a housing crisis, but we generally have about a dozen vacancies um every month. So that means that there is a correlation between livability and um. Necessity and I just think that there are some people that need housing, but they're not finding Wellesley to be livable. So if we are compliant, I will, I'm I'm more interested in us being a livable community, a community that. People feel like they can live in, they they that just because they're working here doesn't mean that they need to live here. Because I know that there's a lot of workers here who don't mind the drive because they really love the job that they have and they. They proud to turn on their talk radio and listen for an hour as they drive into work to Wellesley. We have people who. Wanna make a community here. If you look at who, why you wanna live here, it's for the schools and it's for the sense of community that we have here. So not every workforce person has a family that they wanna raise here in Wellesley. So they're not gonna just wanna have a house here because they work here. So you have to think of other reasons. You have to think about enhancing the diversity, you have to think about how much the the government is gonna be involved in it, but you do have to. Think creatively when you're thinking about housing.
Thank you. Uh yes, a quick response, Michael.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanna highlight uh something Kenny said because I think it's really important. I I certainly agree that the primary goal of the Select Board is to serve. Residents of Wellesley and that's why I think, and I realize your question was directed towards workforce, but I think it's really important to remember that there are. Current Wellesley residents who are also being impacted by the cost of housing. Uh certainly heard from a lot of seniors at the RDF about. Uh being on fixed income and having the cost of living and their their property taxes go up. There's not a lot of options in town for them to downsize or to age in place. Um so again, I understand the question was directed towards workforce, but I think it is important to remember that there are people who live here right now. Who are also grappling with some of these challenges and so I think it's important that we look to them to address those needs as well.
Okay, uh sounds good. So now let's turn to some real life scenarios. Um if you were to be elected to the Select Board. You would be asked to either sponsor or support town meeting articles. Um that's one of their responsibilities. Last fall, two residential incentive overlay or Rio proposals at Washington Court and Walnut Park came before the town. These proposals would have rezoned several parcels to allow two multifamily projects, adding apartments and condos to Wellesley Upper Falls. Both were supported by the town Select and Planning Board, but ultimately rejected at town meeting. Um let's keep these answers short if we can, but Odessa, as a town meeting member, which way did you vote on Washington Court and Walnut Park and why?
I voted no, Max, and I also testified, I spoke, um I believe twice on the floor. So um people could, since they could understand my reason because I am a housing advocate. Um my reason was, I work in that area. Um I um I go to church in that area. And I see the impact of traffic already um without adding an uh um residential. Um overlay. So I knew that that project, well, it was presented and supported by the town. And that makes it very intimidating. Um as a town meeting member, when we see that advisory or the town is supporting something. It's very difficult to go against that. Um but I think that sometimes you have to make the tough decisions when you see. And you witness from the people that would would have been impacted by that project, that in the long run, it would not have been healthy. For that area. And so if I saw a uh an article that was healthy and good for an area, I definitely would support it.
Thank you. Uh Kenny, as an advisory committee member and you were mentioning how foot traffic is so important for businesses and there's two projects that. Could have provided for traffic to those businesses and Wellesley Upper Falls, which way did you vote or which way did you vote and why?
I voted, sorry, I voted against sixteen and four seventeen, so sixteen on Washington Court, seventeen on Walnut Street. And um there are a few reasons. So. My daughter goes, went to Saint John and I spent plenty of time at the light. And I wanted to see and understand that the traffic was not gonna be materially impacted. And no traffic study was done and it, to me, it defied common sense that if you added twenty-four units. And no traffic study was done and it, to me, it defied common sense that if you added twenty-four units uh with two parking spots each and the number of Amazon trap trucks that would go in and out of there every day, uh that you were not going to materially increase traffic in a place that's already a bottleneck. So and, and I also don't believe that um twenty-four units on one acre have any place in a residential district. And that was zoned uh partially residential. So you know, there's twofold reason why I don't agree with, didn't agree with that one and I did not support it. On seventeen, that was different. That was in basically an industrial area uh that had a decent amount of space. Um and it could have been used as uh mixed use. Um it, I don't know that that was perfect. There are still traffic issues, because you could only turn right out of there. Uh which was, when you put sixteen and seventeen together, you're gonna end up with uh significant traffic issues. But I thought that is the type of area that is uh a great possibility for a mixed use development and, and so I voted for that.
Thank you. And Michael, uh which way would you have voted if you were on the select board and these two proposals came to you?
Yeah, I, I, I think for the, for the reasons that Odessa and Kenny mentioned, um I likely would have voted uh no on both of them and, but I'll just expound on that a little bit. I've heard, uh I've talked to a lot of people about uh that town meeting and the Rio process and I've spoken to several people who uh went into that meeting planning on voting yes. And then when they heard the feedback from the neighbors, uh when they heard concerns raised about um the process and the information that was given uh or at least the appearance of how that process was handled, who, who started to have concerns, that, that certainly would have tipped the balance for me as well. Um I think that it, again, as I've said several times, it's critical that we form a consensus around these ideas uh and around these projects. And if we can't do that, I would be hesitant to move forward. Um once you build a building like that, to Kenny's point, in a residential building, there's, there's often no going back. And so that, that needs to be something that has broad support and in the absence of that support by the neighbors in there and by the town at large, it's not something I would be comfortable supporting.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to the last question uh that we teased at the beginning. If you could time travel to any one day in world history, just to observe, but not to change anything, which day would you choose? Let's start with Michael.
So this is gonna be uh a little bit geeky. As I mentioned, I'm a lawyer and a geek uh and I, I'm fascinated by decision-making processes. So uh specifically because the question said I could only observe, I would love to go back to nineteen sixty-six and watch the Supreme Court uh private deliberations in the Miranda case. Uh for those that don't know, that's the case that uh required law enforcement people to say you have the right to remain silent and all that type of stuff. That was not a unanimous decision. Um it was a fairly significant change in law. And I would be fascinated to see the back and forth uh about how the justices work together to create, to craft uh a majority opinion that, that would get enough votes. Uh I think there was probably a lot of politicking that went on behind the scenes there and I think it could serve as a great lesson in how even on the most divisive issues, you can work towards consensus, uh try to find a way to build support. Uh but also ultimately, that in a democracy, even on a court, uh the majority rules. And so once the court has spoken, that is the law going forward. Uh seeing that play out in real time would be fascinating and I think would be really instructive on how particularly small groups uh of small bodies uh can, can govern themselves uh and reach consensus.
Thank you. And Odessa, the same question, any one day in history?
Thank you, Max. Um so for me, even though it may seem grim, but the my, the date I would choose would be May thirtieth nineteen twenty-one. And that would be the day before the two-day um Black Wall Street massacre, um also known as the Tulsa, Oklahoma massacre. And that was when, I mean, earlier on, um some cat, um you know, um oil merchants had um made a great booming town of Oklahoma and that state all across and specifically in Tulsa, many people got to have business opportunities and black people included. And you found the neighborhood of Greenwood, which basically was a gilded area of town where um black men and women raised their families, they had churches, barber shops, they had their own banks, they had their own libraries. And it was just a excellent showing of black excellence and empowerment that I would have loved to be able to see. Um I think it would probably be close to like black um Harlem Renaissance, but just to see so many different businesses thriving, but also to see that that was a moment in town, time where the race riots created the government to deputize people to, in order to be able to um act out their anger on citizens that were just rightfully to own their own business. So I think it reminds us as um government officials that you can do things that are quote unquote right in your eyes, but they could be so wrong historically. So we have to really remember, cuz Oklahoma is still dealing with that today about the decisions that they made on that day. So as an official, I always try to make sure that all of my decisions um will have great impact for now, the present and the future.
Thank you. And we'll finish this question with Kenny.
This is a great question. Um if I could travel back to any one day in history and just observe it, it would be uh June sixth nineteen forty-four, which is D-Day. Uh my grandfather was a medic in the military on that day and you know, I never had a chance to meet him, but uh the role that those men played uh on those beaches and the selflessness and courage that they showed uh to me, having visited the site was like s- just unimaginable uh what they did. Um it was one of the most pivotal battles in history and uh absent that, we all might not be sitting here right now. Uh I think it connects to today, because the freedoms that we enjoy and, and including the ability to have this debate and, and, and talk about ideas and our views were preserved by the people who fought on that day and, and uh we may not be here having this discussion. So I think observing D-Day firsthand would be a really powerful way to appreciate the cost of democracy and the courage um of those who defended it that day.
Thank you. And we will now finish with a closing statement uh timed ninety seconds uh at most. And we'll start with Kenny on this one. So take it away.
So thank you all again for being here today. Um if you made it this far in the election cycle, you've probably heard all of our backgrounds by now, but so I will be very brief on that. Uh I've lived here for fifteen years with my family. I'm currently a advisory committee member and, and the liaison of the select board. Very deeply involved in, in youth sports in the town uh in our schools for a number of years. Uh but since this is a chamber of commerce event, I wanna focus more on my professional background, because I think that's in some ways the most relevant uh to the business community. Uh so for the past two decades, I've worked in finance, the last fifteen years of which uh have been at an investment firm. We provide capital to companies that are both big and small to help them grow. And this work's given me firsthand understanding of the challenges that those businesses face, uh especially small businesses. From navigating taxes and employment issues to dealing with complex, often on regulations that you simply can't understand. Uh I've seen how these obstacles impact the growth and sustainability of businesses. And I wanna bring that perspective to the select board, because a thriving business community is essential to the town's success, success. Uh I believe we need a balanced approach to regulation, one that supports growth while protecting our community's interests. That's why I'd like to see our town require cost benefit analysis before any new regulations imposed on our businesses. This will ensure that we are not creating unnecessary burdens and that any regulation we do enact is truly justified. Uh this will help make Wellesley maintain vibrant business environment and protect our local economy uh for years to come. I'm committed to making practical and well-informed decisions.
You went on mute there. Um I don't know why.
Alright, you, you've heard enough of me anyway.
Yeah, uh thank you Kenny, I appreciate it. And now we will go to Odessa for the closing statement.
Okay. Thank you. So um I've been very passionate about this um position, although I have hmm hundreds of hours of community volunteer service already under my belt because of all of the commissions and boards that I serve on. Um select board being as that it is one of our top uh forms of government where we are making decisions um other than the state that affect the residents of Wellesley in an important way. We also look over the budget of our town and we also look over the safety of our community. Um I believe that I'm the right person for this role because of my long-term dedication, my life experience. I have worked in several organizations and studied in several um institutions that have taught me how to work well with people and how to collaborate with different forms of mind. Um I know that we're speaking for our residents and that's something that's very important to me, but I also know that we're also speaking to the community. How does Wellesley look to outsiders? How do we measure up apart uh as to other towns? Um it's important to me. I go into the community with an attitude that I am a cheerleader for my town. Um as far as the business community, I go in and I speak to people, I speak to see how did they get into town? Um is it comfortable for them? I also know that if somebody called me about a Wellesley business, I go to the Wellesley business and I ask them about that issue, because I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll finish with Michael.
Just wanna thank y'all again for, for hosting this conversation. Um I certainly agree that the business community uh is a, an essential and vital part of what makes Wellesley amazing. It's certainly uh something that my family and I have really enjoyed the opportunity uh to, to visit so many of our businesses and restaurants. Um it's, it's a special thing and it's been great to see uh all the empty bays get filled over the last year or two. Uh as I mentioned at the outset, I've been a private practice attorney for over twenty years. I've been serving on nonprofit boards for over ten. I've been serving on the permanent building committee for the last six years and I've been its chair since twenty twenty-two. In each of those arenas, I have consistently found that the best way to be successful is to seek practical solutions through respectful collaboration. And I speak, I think the respectful piece is extremely important when you remember what we're doing here. Unlike many of you, we are not running a business, we're running a town. And so although we must always be fiscally responsible, we have to also keep our eye on the prize. And that is handing off a community to future residents that's financially vibrant, uh financially stable, thriving, all of the things that are important to us. If we're going to do that, we have to work together. We have to be able to communicate, because whatever we're arguing about today, we're gonna wake up tomorrow and we're still gonna be neighbors. Our kids are still gonna go to school together. We're still gonna see each other in the aisles of Roach Brothers. And so we have to make sure that we are tending to the bonds that tie us together as a community and are always looking to make sure that every resident has a seat at the table, their voices are heard and their thoughts are incorporated into the town's decision-making. Ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you all uh so much for joining us today and thank you to the audience for joining us as well. Um a recording will be made available after and sorry for going over time, but have a great day, everyone. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chamber.